I'd like to call this meeting of your Newark City Council order June 4, 2018. Please call the board.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Here.
Mr. Lang?
Here.
Mr. Marmee?
Present.
Mr. Raff?
Here.
Mr. Blake?
Here.
Mr. Bub?
Here.
Mr. Cost?
Here.
Mr. Frazier?
Present.
We have everyone in attendance this evening. Please rise for the invitation by Mr. Blake.
All of them, please.
I bow our heads. Welcoming God. Help us learn to celebrate our differences and seek justice for our marginalized siblings. Bring life into the workers who seek to dismantle injustices. Those who serve your people of all uniqueness. Provide strength to all people to live their truths by creating spaces that are safe and affirming to live, worship, and thrive. Lord, in your mercy, hear our prayer. Amen.
Please draw me in to pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its core.
Next on the agenda, we have caucus. That's the time for council to discuss anything pertaining to the agenda tonight. We have one item, well, actually, we have four items under Rule 11. Rule 11 is if the minority or majority leader decide that you could go ahead and hear these items because they weren't here in time for committee. Mr. Cost and Mr. Marmee, we okay with that?
Please.
We will do that, and Mr. Marmee will do that in miscellaneous. Do we have anything else from caucus this evening?
Mr. President.
Mr. Frazier.
I'm going to take off the table ordinance number 1752.
Sorry, what was that ordinance?
1752.
1752. Okay. Would you like to take that off the table?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to state anything about that? There's no debate on that.
Yeah, this is the Thornwood Crossing billboard sign. So, we previously tabled this in February. I made the motion to table it because I wanted to make sure that we were moving forward with the proposed road changes that were going in there. That has since been passed in May, so I feel like this is the appropriate time to take it off the table.
Okay, so did we vote in yes or no to take it off the table? And then if it is off the table, you're going to bring it up in miscellaneous?
Correct.
I'll just bring it up.
I'll go, I'm sorry.
I'll just call the board to vote.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Second by Mr. Marmee.
I'm sorry.
I'll just call the board to take this off the table. This will be a yes or no.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
That will be taken off the table, and we'll further discuss that in miscellaneous. Anything else from caucus?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmee.
Yes, I don't believe we're going to, ordinance 18-16 has an emergency clause. I don't believe we're going to vote on it tonight. That'd do us in the way. Although it has an emergency with two readings, there is a vote, and I will abstain from that due to the fact that I serve on the Homeowners Association of Fairway Estates.
Thank you, Mr. President. Anything else from caucus? Seeing none, we're going to move on to our minutes of the May 21, 2018 meeting. Is there a motion to approve those?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Labutus, second by Mr. Frazier. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If opposed, same sign. That passes. Thank you. We have four reports this evening from standing committees, one from finance, one from service, one from economic development, and one from capital improvements. Without objection, those will be received and filed. We have one report this evening from city officials. Barb Jobe is our city income tax administrator. The income tax revenue report for the period ending May 15, 2018. Without objection, that will be received and filed. There are two sections from citizens' comments this evening. One is now, and one is after the legislation. Basically, this is just your opportunity to be heard. This is not a debate with council, but this is your chance to be heard. Do we have anyone for this first section of citizens' comments? If we do, please raise your hand. If not, we'll recognize later. Okay? Thank you. Now, we go on to ordinances on the second reading, 18-12.
Ordinance 18-12 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee, and ordinance enacting amendments to Newark sewer use and sewer charges, ordinance 91-59, directing limited publication of the sewer use and sewer charges ordinance.
You've heard the second reading of 18-12. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Raff?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt 18-12.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Raff, second by Mr. Bub. Do we have any comments on 18-12? Seeing none, I'll just call the board to vote.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
18-12 passes 10-0. Next, we move on to the second reading, 18-13.
Ordinance 18-13 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee, and Mr. Frazier, and ordinance ranking professional design firms and authorizing the director of public service to negotiate an agreement for architectural services for fire station construction projects.
You've heard the second reading of 18-13. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Raff?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt 18-13.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Raff, second by Mr. Bub. Is there any discussion on 18-13? No. Seeing none, I'll just call the board to vote.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
No.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
18-13 passes 8-2. Next, we have 18-15.
Ordinance 18-15 by Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Raff, and ordinance vacating a 10-foot-wide alley as shown on the flat of the Avalon allotment as recorded in Flat Book 3, page 82 of the Licking County Flat Records. Said alley running west from Showman Avenue located south of Cherry Valley Road.
You've heard the second reading of 18-15. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Frazier.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance 18-15.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Frazier?
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any discussion on 18-15? Seeing none, I'll just call the board to vote.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
18-15 passes 10-0. Next, on the second reading, we have 18-16.
Ordinance 18-
Oh, I'm sorry, on the first reading. We have 18-16. Sorry.
Ordinance 18-16 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Cost, Mr. Frazier, and ordinance determining to proceed with the improvement of properties in and abutting Fairway Estates subdivision and Longhorn Hill Road by upgrading the existing sanitary sewer system and installing a new gravity sewer system and the necessary pertinences thereto and declaring an emergency.
18-16 is on its first reading, but is it an emergency? What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Raff?
I'd like to make a motion to table 18-16.
Motion to table.
I'd like to make a motion to-
Point of order. You've got to bring it to the table.
Yes. Make a motion to adopt 18-16.
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any discussion on 18-16?
Mr. President.
Mr. Raff?
I'd like to make a motion to table 18-16.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Raff, second by Mr. Frazier to table 18-16.
Mr. President.
Mr. Raff?
I'd like to make a motion to table that until June 18. While there is an emergency on that, that's just for timing, but this legislation is pending other legislation, so we want to table that for two weeks.
Okay. Motion to table is not available, so I'll just call the board.
Well, he just brought it to debate. How can I not speak?
Well, I don't think he brought it for debate. He would just say why you're on the table. Go ahead. If you want to say something.
Yeah, I know that I won't be here on the 18th. I want to vote on this. There may be another member of council I believe that's not going to be here on the 18th, so I don't, and Mr. Bub is going to have to abstain, so it could cause a problem putting it on the 18th if we have three people absent.
You still want to go with the table, right?
I guess I'm wondering what my options are. I mean, it needs to be effective on the 18th.
To not go with tabling it and vote on it tonight because it's an emergency, or to vote, see if you have enough to table. That's your two options.
All right, I will withdraw my request to table.
You withdraw your second.
Yes.
Okay. Now, we're back to 18, is that all right, Mr. Sassen? All right so far? Now, we're back to 18-16. Is it an emergency? What is your wish? We've already got adoption in the second, don't we? Is there any other discussion on 18-16?
I think we've had enough.
I might agree with anyone else.
No. I'll just call the board to vote.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Abstain.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
We have nine yes and one abstention, so 18-16 passes. Next, let's move on to resolutions on the second reading, 18-36.
Resolution 18-36 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Cost, Mr. Raff, and Mr. Frazier, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Newark to submit an application to the Ohio Department of Public Safety Office for federal fiscal year 2019 Ohio Traffic Safety Grants Programs, Selective Traffic Enforcement Program, and the Impaired Driving Enforcement Program.
You've heard the second reading of 18-36. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marmee.
I make a motion to adopt resolution 18-36.
Motion by Mr. Marmee?
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any discussion on 18-36? Seeing none, I'll just call the board to vote.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
18-36 passes 10-0. Next, on the second reading is 18-37.
Resolution 18-37 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Cost, and Mr. Frazier, a resolution authorizing and directing the director of public service of the city of Newark, Ohio to advertise for bids and enter into a contract subject to the appropriation of funds for the off-site disposal of lime sludge from lagoon number three at Newark's water treatment plant.
You've heard the second reading of 18-13. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Raff?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt 18-37.
Motion by Mr. Raff?
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any discussion on 18-37?
No.
Seeing none, I'll just call the board to vote.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
18-37 passes 10-0. Next, on the second reading, 18-38.
Resolution 18-38 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Cost, Mr. Frazier, a resolution authorizing and directing the director of public service of the city of Newark, Ohio to apply for, accept, and enter into a water pollution control loan fund agreement on behalf of the city of Newark for planning, design, and/or construction of the wastewater facilities interceptor optimization project and designating a dedicated repayment source for the loan.
Very good. First second reading of 18-38. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Raff?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt 18-38.
Motion by Mr. Raff?
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. Any discussion on 18-38? Seeing none, I'll just call the board to vote.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
18-38 passes 10-0. And finally, on the second reading, we have 18-40.
Resolution 18-40 by Mr. Cost, Mr. Frazier, Mr. Raff, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
You've heard the second reading of 18-40. What is your wish?
Mr. President.
Mr. Lang?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution 18-40.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Lang, second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any discussion on 18-40? Seeing none, I'll just call the board to vote.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Mr. Raff?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
18-40 passes 10-0. And finally, resolutions on the first reading, 18-43.
Resolution 18-43 by Mr. Raff, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Cost, Mr. Frazier, a resolution authorizing and directing the director of public service to negotiate and enter into contract without competitive bidding for the purchase and installation of new high-efficiency street lighting through the U.S. Commodities Purchasing Program.
18-43 will be held for two weeks for a second reading. Next, we have 18-44.
Resolution 18-44 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Cost, Mr. Raff, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
18-44 will be held for two weeks for a second reading. And finally, we have 18-45.
Resolution 18-45 by Mr. Cost, Mr. Frazier, and Mr. Raff, a resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of the municipal corporation.
And 18-45 will be held for two weeks for a second reading. That concludes our legislation this evening. Next on the agenda, we have another section of comments from citizens. Again, the same rules apply. Basically, it's your opportunity to be heard. This is not a question and answer with council, but just your time is. Say your piece. Do we have anyone? Ma'am? Just give us your name and address for the record. I'll remember how that goes.
Hi, my name is Laura Canby. I live 1120 Winter Mute Avenue, and I'm here about the gazebo still. I think it's time to fix the mistake and put it back on the courthouse square where it belongs. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Everett?
Well, we have about five or six minutes that I can spend on this.
Uh-huh. You give us your name and address for the record, please.
Everett McKee, 255 Ups and Downs Road.
Thank you.
Okay, this has to do with things I've been thinking about and everything. First of all, I'd like to say that a few comments may cause some offense, which is no offense is meant to anybody. Also, I'm not an authority on health or anything like that, but this does have to do with health issues. So, first of all, though, I'd like to compliment the Licking County Health Department for their active role in promoting good health in Licking County. They're also usually down at the market, along with Licking Memorial Hospital, promoting good health, and they're setting a good example for all of us. A few years ago, the Health Department was here giving a yearly report, and I had made a comment about Americans being 5 billion pounds overweight. And I thought the Health Department should get more aggressive about promoting good, healthy eating. And it looks like they're doing that. I'm sure it wasn't because I made that comment, but they are doing that. So, that's good. As a dancer, I'm very frustrated about people not dancing, mainly because of poor health and obesity. That's a real problem. If you're running a restaurant or selling food and you want to repeat business, it isn't a very good idea to kill your customers. And that is what's happening. But some food providers don't care about that. There's, the supply of people is almost limited or unlimited. Also, the supply of junk food is endless and cheap, which perpetuates poor health. Except for a few, most people will eat whatever is quick, handy, and cheap. Quick and cheap isn't necessarily bad. There's a lot of fast-food restaurants that do provide very good food. On the other hand, expensive and well-prepared food isn't necessarily good either. The old saying, the old saying that we are what we eat still holds true, along with other factors such as lifestyle and activity, or lack thereof. What we eat and how much is mostly what determines our health. When you go to the grocery store, look around and see aisle after aisle of mostly useless stuff. And then look at the customer ahead of you in the checkout line and see what they're picking up. And look at their weight. The right of all people to have food, shelter, and even transportation is a community responsibility, and government is a necessary part of that. Of course, it's all our responsibility to take our own health into hand, too. Transportation in Licking County is currently being addressed to help solve that important issue. So, if people can't get to the good food, what are they going to eat? The old little bear is a great opportunity, in fact, a golden opportunity, to create a place where mostly healthy food can be attained at a really low price, or even nothing for those who have no income. It could be a co-op of locals, and even an extension of the farmer's market through the winter. If we need to change the framework to make that happen, then let's do it. The healthcare providers need to not only promote good health, as LMH is doing, through their active fit programs, they, as well as all of us, including our safety services, need to set a good example by becoming the picture of health. Look at the pictures of any of these publications, and what do you see? Except for the ongoing research in human health, the science is mostly proven about what it takes to be healthy. The obesity epidemic was created by us. It isn't something like a virus or something that we had no control over. We have full control over that. It is easy to fix. No technological breakthroughs are needed. So, listen to the science and stop defying the problem, or stop denying the problem. Most of us have computers, and when you ain't got nothing better to do, Google "healthy nutrition" and then enjoy the results. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ma'am?
My name is Vicki Hewitt, and I live at 43 North Third Street. I wanted to talk to you all about safety today. All of my concerns are under that umbrella. Along with me, I wanted to tell you about the other people who also live at 43 North Third Street. There's a person who was in the military. He actually completed a tour in war, and now he's a nurse. He works for the emergency room for Licking. One of the tenants is a bread manufacturer. Another one is a military person and a culinary chef, and another one is a bank supervisor. And then there's me. I'm a nurse, and I'm also a bartender. Prior to being a nurse and a bartender, I worked in healthcare management for 15 years, and I raised a family, and I have two successful children who are productive members of society, I believe. I wanted to talk about safety, and I wanted to mention Maslow's hierarchy of needs. Maslow called the bottom four levels of the pyramid deficiency needs because a person does not feel anything if they are not met, but becomes anxious if they are not. The physio, sorry, physiosociological needs, such as eating, drinking, sleeping, are deficiency needs as our safety needs. Social needs, such as friendship and sexual intimacy, and ego needs and self-esteem and recognition. In contrast, Maslow called the fifth level of the pyramid a growth need because it enables a person to self-actualize or reach his fullest potential as a human being. A person cannot reach the next level of the hierarchy unless each one is met, and the second one is safety. And that's why I wanted to bring it to your attention. Sorry, I'm losing my train of thought here. The three things I wanted to, well, actually, I wanted to mention two family mottos. I got out of line here. One of our family mottos in our family was, is if you're a Hewitt, you can do it. My children were raised on that. And then also, if you're capable of helping someone, do it, and no questions asked. It's not about, we define the definition of capability as a responsibility and an obligation. And so, in our family, if we see somebody in need, we help them. If my children aren't capable, they come to me, or they find someone else who's capable. And in a little bit, I'll talk a little bit more about that. In our family, we've helped drug addicts recover. We've helped people with health disparities recover, people with health problems. We always take in strays, whether they're animals or people, and we help them out. My issues or my concerns that I'm bringing forth today are the parking concerns. We had a police concern this week, and also, there's a fire escape on the back of my building that is part of code to be connected to my apartment. And I'll go back, I'm going to go back to the parking situation. I work to, everyone in our building works second or third shift. Everyone in our building works second or third shift. I get off between hours of 3:00 and 5:00 a.m., and I'm expected to walk nearly five blocks home. And I did do this after I received a parking ticket. And there... I had 27 encounters of either homeless, or drug addict, or just people wandering the streets at that time. I was asked for money. I was asked for food. I was fearful that I was going to, you know, have someone come up to me and be aggressive. So, I won't park there. I won't park where I'm expected to park. I park near my apartment, and I set my alarm for the time that they're going to make their rounds, and I go down and move my car. So, I get... I do not get uninterrupted sleep. I sleep for about two hours and go move my car. And then I walk the five blocks during the daytime. The next issue is a police issue. I do work in a bar, and I've had what I would call a good relationship with police officers in this town, just because they've always responded pretty quickly to the place that I work when we need them. This week, I had an intruder in my home, and he got in my home through the fire escape. I did call my landlord, and they said that because of code, they don't think that can be removed. There was also a... Another person who was arrested who went up a fire escape of Mo's, and they're requesting that theirs gets removed as well. So, I don't know if code can be changed or not, but that's something that I'm definitely after. Because of all the construction going on on Third Street, that's opened up a wide array of people being able to come up and live on my roof, sleep on my roof. And it comes to my back door and my window. I'm afraid to look out my window because there's people out there, and I'm afraid they're peering in at me. And this person did break into my home, and my son was there, and he went at my son while he was sleeping. When we called the police, the police did not come up to the apartment, check out the scene or anything. They spoke to my son outside of our apartment and just took the description of the individual who broke in. I left to work early that day just to be with my son. And then, that night, I was leaving to go to my second job, and the intruder was breaking into my home again. And I called 911, and I was told that the police were on the way. I waited and waited. The guy was jiggling my door, banging on it. And then he also was banging on the neighbor's door. So, I texted my neighbors and told them, "The guy is back that broke in earlier today." Neither of them were home, and they are both males. And I just thought that might be help if they were there. I called 911 again because 10 minutes had passed. I hadn't heard anything, and the guy was banging on my door, jiggling the doorknob. He was trying to get in. They said, "Do not open the door. Do not go outside. Someone is on the way." I asked them, "Should I go down the fire escape?" Because the police aren't going to be able to get in because my front door is secured. So, the intruder is in my hallway where there's a secured door that the police can't get in unless they bust the glass, and in my door. And I could have snuck out the back and let, you know, the police come in through the fire escape if need be. They said, "No, don't leave." So, 20 minutes have gone by, and there's no... There's no help on site or on the way or anything. I started calling friends. I called Jeff... Well, I called Jen, Jeff's girlfriend, and I said... I was probably hysterical, and I said, "I don't know what to do. This guy is going to get in here." He'd already been in my apartment once earlier in the day. He tore down curtains, blinds, went through all of my things, and he's back. And she said, "Don't go out, you know. Just wait. We're on our way." Jeff and Jen made it there within 15 minutes. Other people, my neighbors came too, and all I know is everyone was outside of the building. The police were not. The intruder was still inside. Just to make the long story short, we waited an hour and a half for police to come, and over 15 calls had been made to 911. I made six calls myself. The dispatchers kept telling me someone was on the way. And when we decided to just apprehend the guy and drag him down to the police department ourselves, I had to call 911 again and request that the police arrest the guy outside of their police station because he had broken in twice. At that point, I wasn't there for this, but I was told to get my son because he was the only one who could ID the guy because it's hearsay. They couldn't arrest... It's hearsay until there's a eyewitness. So, I had to get my son out of work and go down and point the guy out and say, "Yes, this is the guy who broke in." They arrested him at that time. I hope that he's still in jail today. They said he may get out today. I haven't heard anything. I don't know. There's not been any contact to me or my son in regards to this guy. I asked several questions. I asked why no one was dispatched for an hour and a half. They said they never got the dispatch call from 911. They said there's a break in the system, and the police officers said that we were not made a priority call. Even though we had an intruder and we had somebody that broke in, we weren't made a priority. And that's why they didn't get the call. That's what they were assuming. They said that I needed to bring this... Police Officer Benner is the one who said I needed to bring this forth and to be discussed because there's a break in communication between Licking County Dispatch and 911. And then, again, the last thing I wanted to talk about was that fire escape. If there's some way that we can have that taken down because I think that would alleviate some of our problems with people sleeping on our roofs and traveling on the roofs between... Above the arcade, my roof reaches their roof, and you can go out there anytime and see people sleeping on it or inhabiting there. So, in closing, I just want to say that you can help us meet Maslow's hierarchy of needs and help us feel safe, and then also help us practice our family motto, if you're able and capable of helping someone do it.
Thank you for sharing that story. That's certainly unacceptable. I think Mr. Rath has talked to Safety Director Baum, and I'm sure he has Lord Saider miscellaneous, but that is certainly not what should happen when you call 911. That's for sure. Sir, is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Stephen Smith, 237 Violet Court. We're entering the month where we will be celebrating the country's birthday, and it seems to be a celebration that lasts longer and longer each time. And I don't grudge anyone the celebration. But I am worried about what I think are lapses of safety when people can buy incendiary devices at any market and use them without any safety issues or training. I happened to witness what I thought was a particularly egregious example of that recently. And I guess I don't have any solutions to offer. But I would like the issue to be raised, that these items you can buy at any local convenience store are not toys. They do have their dangers. And it's a, I think, a matter of public safety that these things should be made... That the public should be made aware that these do need to be handled carefully with attention to safety. Thank you.
Any city officials this evening? I'm sorry? Oh, I'm just... I'll move on. Any city officials this evening? Okay. Let's see. Our law director, who's back from the Appalachian Trail jaunt.
Mr. President.
No photos, no...
I have lots of pictures, lots of stories, but...
We'll save that. Thank you, Mr. Sassen. Mayor Hall.
I will pass this evening, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Hall.
Yes, I'd like to thank... Is it Ms. Hewitt? Thank you for the story. I'd like to talk to you after council. Also, I would like to thank the Licking County Health Department. Over the past few weeks, we've had a situation in my ward. And property maintenance was there. Our animal control officer was there. Licking County Health jumped in, and they were at the same address at least six times and talked to the people in the house. They had several animals living in the house. They still do. Nobody's been inside the house, but we're keeping an eye on them, and we're trying to do something about it. Licking County Health has been there. They're following up. They call. They email you. They get back to you. And I just wanted to thank them for their efforts. So, with that, I'll pass. Thank you.
Ms. Hall, Mr. Labutus.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Hewitt, thank you for sharing your story from a few days ago. Absolutely horrific, and I cannot imagine living through that. And I'm sorry, and I apologize for that as much as I can. I'd also like to speak with you after council as well. With that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Labutus. Mr. Lang.
Yeah, so, I was really pleased to see Resolution 1813 pass tonight. I do think it's critical that we build a new fire station in the 5th Ward. I think that will allow us, you know, whatever you think of our current staffing levels, I think that will allow us to deploy our safety resources in a much more efficient manner. And so, I'm really happy to see that that passed tonight. But of course, it doesn't matter where you put your people if the 911 system is broken. And so, I have serious concerns with your story, Ms. Hewitt, and thank you for sharing and bringing to our attention. I certainly want to talk to our safety director more. I want to find out what's going on. I understand Mr. Rath is already looking into it as well. So, I'd like to just share my concerns regarding that, and we'll continue to follow up as well. So, thank you. Thank you. Also, like, a little bit of lighter note, just like to thank my colleagues for excusing me from the last meeting so I could attend my son's preschool graduation. Time seems to be passing quickly with childhood with the kids. So, I'd like to thank everyone for letting me attend that. With that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. Mr. Marley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Need to call a finance committee meeting. And then, also, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to adopt 18-17.
Motion by Mr. Marley to adopt 18-17. Is there a second? I'll read that first, please.
Ordinance 18-17 by Mr. Rath, Mr. Marley, Mr. Cost, and ordinance consenting to the annexation of certain territory generally described as being approximately .576 acres, more or less, located in North Township to the city of Norfolk, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
All four of these are an emergency. Mr. Marley, anything else on that?
Mr. President, can I comment just kind of generically on these four pieces?
Yes, sir.
I just want to confirm any questions that there might be, that this is being brought forth under Rule 11 because when we received these from the county commissioner, we missed the deadline for the last set of committees for them to actually be addressed and voted on the committee. If you recall, two weeks ago, they were discussed in committee.
Yes.
But they were not voted on. So, they're here today for that purpose, for Rule 11. All four of these provisions are also an emergency because this is an expedited to annexation. We have deadlines that we have to meet pursuant to the Ohio revised code. That deadline is actually tomorrow. So, we need to have three of these four pieces of legislation back to the county by tomorrow. The reason I say three out of four is because, I'll just refresh everyone's memory, that ordinance 1817 and 1818 are mirror opposites of each other. And we do that now so that council can have a meaningful opportunity, if they wish, to object to the annexation of property. So, when you look at these first two ordinances that you're going to be looking at, you can only pass one of those two. We put 1817 on there, or 1818 on there, objecting simply for council to have a meaningful opportunity to object if they wish. So, you cannot adopt both 1817 and 1818. If you... If we adopt 1817, then 1818 obviously has to be rejected. I know we've been through that before. I knew I restate that every time, but I think it's important to remember that it doesn't come up all the time. You can't pass both of these. Those are the only points I wanted to clarify from this.
Thank you, Mr. Sassen. That's a good refresher. Anyone else? Mr. Rath?
Just a question. If we adopt 18-17, is 18... Can 18-18 die for lack of motion, or does it need to be voted down?
It can be... It can die for lack of a motion.
Anything else on 18-17? All right, let's call a roll vote.
I need a second. I didn't get a second.
Oh, second.
No, okay. I didn't hear it. I didn't hear. Okay. Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marley?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
And Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
18-17 passes 10-0. All right, I'm going to go ahead and read 18-18. Or... Super sensible. Probably not going to make a motion. We probably ought to read it and just see if anybody makes a motion. How about that? Sure.
Ordinance 18-18 by Mr. Rath, Mr. Marley, Mr. Cost, and ordinance objecting to the annexation of certain territory generally described as being .576 acres, more or less, located in North Township to the city of Norfolk, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
You've heard the reading of 18-18. It is an emergency. What is your wish? Does anyone wish to adopt that since we probably can't? Okay, that will dog for lack of a motion. Mr. Marley?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to adopt 18-46.
Motion by Mr. Marley to adopt 18-46.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bub. All right, I'm going to go ahead and read that.
Resolution 18-46 by Mr. Rath and Mr. Cost, a resolution adopting a statement indicating what services the city of Norfolk, Ohio, will be provided... Will provide for approximately .576 acres, more or less, located in North Township, a territory proposed for annexation to... Expedited to annexations, excuse me, and declaring an emergency.
You've heard the reading of 18-46, and there's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? See none? All right, please call a roll vote.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marley?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
And Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
18-46 passes 10-0, and we have one more. Mr. Marley?
Thank you, Mr. President. Make a motion to adopt 18-47.
Motion by Mr. Marley?
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. All right, I'm going to read 18-47, please.
Resolution 18-47 by Mr. Rath, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marley, a resolution regarding a buffer zone for the annexation of approximately .576 acres, more or less, located in North Township, and declaring emergency.
Again, 18-47 is an emergency. There have been a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? See none? All right, please call a roll vote.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marley?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
And Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
18-47 passes 10-0. Thank you, Mr. Marley.
Okay, to continue on, Ms. Hewitt, I also feel for what you have gone through, and I'm confident that we'll find some answers. And not only answers, but that we will find a solution to try to correct the problem so that it never occurs again. Appreciate you coming forward, not only to see me, but also, I'm sure, that contacting the different individuals that you did to take it forward. Appreciate that. A lot of times, we don't know there's a problem unless it's told to us that there is a problem. So, thank you very much for that. And with that, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Marley. Mr. Rath?
Thank you. First, I want to say thank you for coming forward. I know it's difficult just to get up and talk about traumatic experience like that in front of everybody, and I appreciate you coming forward and talking about it and letting everybody else hear your story. Like she said, I was there at the time when all of this transpired. She called us. We were out at Buckeye Lake, on our way home. Came straight over. Amazingly enough, the guy's still there, and we literally walked him to the police station. An hour and a half after I arrived is when he was finally arrested. What's amazing to me, and I guess first, let me say this. We absolutely have some of the best police officers around. I am constantly amazed at the crimes that are unsolved and at the rate that they're solved, and what a great job that they do. I'm impressed with the new officers that we've signed on, and I'm excited for them because they get to learn from some of the best police officers out there. We have a great department. But it's impossible for them to do their job when they don't know what's going on. At 11:30 at night, when I'm standing in front of the police station, and I flagged down a police officer that drives by after holding a... Breaking and entering suspect at bay for an hour and a half, and he circles around, gets out of his car, and says, "What's going on?", has absolutely no clue what's going on. It is... It's embarrassing. It's appalling. There is a system in place that is broken that needs to be fixed. I don't know if this is a single incident. I'm told that's possibly what it could be, but I've heard from police officers over time that this thing happens periodically, more so than it should. And Saturday night, there were lives at risk. There were absolutely lives at risk. She was up at her apartment in a confined space with nobody around to help, and he'd been successful at breaking into that apartment. Who knows what he would have done, what he could have done? Who knows if he would have had a weapon? Who knows what state of mind he was in? I know after spending an hour and a half of time with him, I had absolutely no clue what he was capable of doing or what he could have possibly done, just based on the conversation and the words coming out of his mouth. I'm not going to make assumptions, but I'm telling you, that's not a conversation that I would have with anybody that I've ever associated with. So, I don't know what his state of mind was, but it certainly wasn't in the same state of mind as anybody I've ever associated with before. Who knows? When we spent the hour and a half walking him to the police station and detaining him, who knows what he was capable of doing? Absolutely no clue. And for the fact that our entire police force was completely unaware that this situation was happening, to me, is just... Best word to describe it is it's just unacceptable. So, there's problems that need to be looked at. There's an obvious investigation that's going to happen, but I don't think it needs to be an investigation into one single incident. It needs to be an investigation once that is done. And yes, absolutely, that needs to be done, but it's an investigation that needs to be done of the system because from what I'm hearing from our officers, it's just not a single incident. This occurs often, and the words that I heard was, "More often." So, that's a problem. So, we need to address that. And I look forward to hearing from the administration, whether that be Mary Hall, Safety Director Baum, or the administration from Licking County Sheriff's Department and the dispatchers. But we are... It's just unacceptable to put people's lives at risk. It's just that simple. So, with that, I'll call the service committee meeting and pass.
Thank you, Mr. Rath. Did you say you were going to make a couple of other phone calls, too, also, like maybe the chief or someone else?
I am. I'm planning to...
Would you?
Calling Chief Farnell, and I'm going to speak with him. And I'm also planning on making some calls to Licking County Sheriff's Department and having a conversation with them.
Well, would you impress upon the chief that someone needs to get in touch with Vicki?
Yeah, you know, that's a good point. There's really only, amazingly enough, thankfully enough, in my life, two times where I've needed police, this being the second time. The first time was somebody came into my house. Fortunately, everything worked that night. Everything worked perfectly well. that night. Everything worked perfectly well. I took him down, held him at gunpoint, and held him at gunpoint for under four minutes before my house was swarmed with police officers. And they took him, they arrested him and took him away. What I thought was amazing at that time was that from that moment until his trial was complete, which I was at and intended for, there was never a minute where I didn't know where that guy was. We had victims advocates calling our family, sending emails, saying, "This is where he is. This is what the process is. This is what's going to happen." And there was never any question in my mind what was going on. I can't imagine not knowing that. That's, that's a real sense of security. So, yeah, it would be nice if we could have somebody from, I'm not sure who. I don't know if it's the, if it's the court system or if it's the police department.
Talking to the chief would be a good start.
But yeah, I will have that conversation with him. But somebody needs to get with Ms. Hewitt and her family and let them know where this guy is and what's going on, and whether they need to be worried about when he's coming back or not.
Thank you, Mr. Rath. Mr. Blake?
I just want to say to Mrs. Hewitt, I also lived at forty-three North Oak Street. This was ten years ago, but I also remember living there. And it sounds like Mr. Rath is going to be a good advocate for you to get some answers regarding the safety issue. But I do remember when I lived in the old YMCA, that we had a downtown parking resident sticker. And so, because I parked Catty Corner from Park National Bank, there was parking spaces there. And so, I don't know if that's still available for a downtown, to get a downtown resident thing. But I know when I lived there, that was an option. So, if that's not, then maybe we should have some discussions about that and seeing about getting that parking sticker, because waking you up in the middle of your sleep to disrupt that, to go move your car just to try to avoid a parking ticket, that doesn't sound good. I mean, you want to live downtown. You're living downtown. You're contributing to all the positive things happening. So, that's another issue that I'm glad that you raised tonight, and thank you for your comments there. I wanted to make a few, few comments regarding my no vote on eighteen thirteen. I'm most definitely not opposed to a new fire station. I think that anytime that we have the ability or the opportunity to build a new building, to be able to try to address some needs, I think that's wonderful. My concern comes into where we need a public discussion with our Division of Fire. And now, we're going to have that discussion on June fourteenth. The fire chief is going to come and give his comments, which is, the committee, the service committee didn't hear any comments from our fire chief, and now has his counsel for any public comments from our fire chief. But on June fourteenth, at the OSU Norck Re Center, the auditorium, the police chief, or I'm sorry, the fire chief will be there, and the event sponsored by our council president, Don Ellington, and then also Councilman Fennell. And I think there's some serious questions to be asked, you know, regarding staffing, regarding equipment, regarding if we do build the new fire station in its proposed location, are we shifting, reducing response times in one area and then increasing response times in another area? There's no access road from the proposed location to Twenty-first Street. So, there's a lot of different concerns and a lot of different questions at which have not been addressed publicly, which I hope we can have a good positive discussion on June fourteenth at six o'clock at the OSU Norck Re Center auditorium. And so, I look forward to having that, and hopefully, we can have a good, good crowd at that meeting. And then I would just want to say that even this Thursday, regarding public safety and drug addiction and recovery, there is a town hall at the Norck High School cafeteria area. And that's going to be a very good panel discussion with a lot of Q and A, and hopefully, some networking and some, develop some opportunities there. And then, I have to say it, you know, this Saturday is Norck Pride, our first one. And we, Pride has been in several other major cities and several other communities. And our inaugural event will be this Saturday. So, I'm looking forward to having people at the Canal Market District from four to seven. And then, at Thirty-one West will be the other evening activities. Now, but Saturday's going to be a busy day, because the works is also having an opening for their sciogdom. So, that's happening and has a lot of different astronauts and a lot of different science projects going on there. So, it's going to be a great day in downtown Norck on Saturday. And I think with that, I'll pass, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. I do believe that parking forbidden talked about is no longer available, but I know Director Baum is working on something for the folks downtown as you, as we speak here. Been working on it the last couple, three weeks, and that is going to come around here pretty soon. Thank you. Mr. Bub?
I'll pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bub. Mr. Cost?
Ms. Hewitt, thank you so much for coming. Thank you for making us aware so that we can see what can be done to help your problem. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Cost. Mr. Fennell?
Ms. Hewitt, thank you again. I think that I echo most people here for coming up and speaking. And my greatest hope is that you sharing your story will help us work to make sure that this doesn't happen again. And I'm sorry that this happened to you. I know that I had a home invasion myself. I was lucky, and like Mr. Rath, everything worked great that night. And the police were there, and they were amazing. So, I'm sorry that you did not have that experience. And please know that I can forgive myself that I would like to speak with you as well after council and see if there's anything that we can do to help, to help you along in this process, and also to ensure this doesn't happen to other people. I would also like to comment really quickly about the fire station. It's not that also that I oppose the fire station. It is just something that I'm concerned about the condition of the vehicle. It'll be put in honorary service for this. I believe it has around ninety thousand miles on it, and our ability to adequately staff the station. I think that the location of the station and building a station is absolutely needed. I just want to make sure that if we put this new station in, that it has the best opportunity to be as successful and effective as possible. And I just want to make sure that we're looking at all of the different concerns before we move forward with that. Also, I'd like to echo Jeremy that our inaugural pride is this weekend. And there's a lot of creative events that will be happening at Canal Market District, and also at Thirty-one West, and I think Dennis and Art Space as well next to that. So, that'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Fennell. Mr. Fraser?
I'd like to consider ordinance number seventeen fifty-two.
Seventeen dash fifty-two. We have voted to remove that from the table. That has already been, there's already been a motion and a second for that before we table it. Motion by Mr. Rath, second by Mr. Fraser. I guess it is in your packet. All right, you'd just like to just read, read the ordinance there, and then we'll hold it up for discussion.
Ordinance seventeen dash fifty-two, and ordinance amending Article one thirty-five display signs and outdoor advertising of the city, or, excuse me, of the zoning code of the city of Norck, Ohio.
Just to remind everyone, the planning commission did not approve this, so we'll take seven votes to pass this.
I may speak.
Just, you might.
Thank you.
As soon as I get done.
Don't worry about it.
So, the planning commission has been opposed to, and they were similarly opposed to seventeen fifty-three when it came to the new sign that was being stood up on thirteen. And so, really, we have a couple of options there. We can either say, "Look, this new road is going to go on the Norwood Crossing. The existing billboard that they're requesting to relocate will just become an eyesore and be dormant and not be relocated." Or, we can relocate it to this location and have economic activity, and basically, remake this entryway and make this billboard all part of the aesthetics. When it comes to the planning commission decision, I strongly disagree with it. I understand the goal to control and maintain the billboard situation that we have. The billboard that's being relocated is even on this map. And so, we really need to take a strong stance on this and look at what we're doing. And we can either make the decision that the planning commission did, and allow a billboard and an access route change, and not update our map, and not update the location of that. Or, we can take the proactive decision and do what the property owner wants, as well as the company, and encourage economic activity in our community.
Thank you, Mr. Fraser. Any other discussion? Mr. Rath?
I will just say, as the third ward councilman, and this is being in the third ward, I agree with everything Mr. Fraser said. The sign that is on the corner of Running to the Cherry Valley Road is, has been there for a long time. It's not definitely, it's definitely not aesthetically pleasing to the area, allowing a sign that the Thornwood Crossing would eliminate the sign at Running to Cherry Valley because of the proximity. They're going to have to make a choice, one or the other. The other is definitely more, definitely more desirable. So, I would encourage everybody to please support this. The area that we're talking about putting the sign was not on the map when the map was created.
Thank you, Mr. Rath. Mr. Blake?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's been a while since we've talked about this. But just to refresh my memory, okay, the planning commission was opposed to putting this up, right? And then there was, wasn't the owner of the Cherry Valley Lodge also was opposed to it? Then we also received notifications from the Granville Village. That was, this is the same sign, right?
Correct.
All right. And so, a yes vote is to put it in?
Yes.
Okay, so we.
Anyone else? Mr. Cost?
The planning commission, when they voted on this, my impression was that they did not feel it was a particularly good location as far as being an entryway to the city, making another billboard be what the first thing you see when you, when you approach Newark. I agree that the old billboard will be totally ineffective when that's closed off. But I am certainly not in agreement that we need another billboard to add to the ones that we already have. The, the folks at the Cherry Valley Lodge certainly don't, don't want it as well. And as, and as Councilman Blake said, the Granville was not thrilled about it either. I, I don't think it's a particularly effective way of entering Newark, is to, is to be facing a billboard. I, I, I can't support it, just to say something. Thank you.
Mr. Cost, anyone else? Mr. Marley?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't know about anyone else, but I know when I go, come into Newark, a lot of times, some of the billboards that are displayed are a good representation of Newark and what we offer and what we provide, community service included into, in with the advertising. In addition to that, I, I think that there are those folks that think that billboards are negative and they're economically positive for our community. As far as a business owner, I know that billboards are effective as far as advertising and community, passing of community information. I, I think it's, it's an effective way of communication. And if there is a way, especially into the entrance of our city, to highlight some of the positive things within our community on sixteen and on the entryway into our community, that folks will stop in our community and visit for a while, I think it's definitely something that we want. And I, I just think that, you know, all the signs that coming into the community, when you're entering into Newark, you try to display things that are going to attract people to one-stop and stay. And so therefore, I'm in full support of this.
Thank you, Mr. Marley. Anyone else? Mr. President, anyone else to add?
Okay.
Mr. Blake?
Okay. I just want to say, you know, we did a lot of work with the folks at Cherry Valley Lodge. And they're putting a huge investment into the area over there. And that's, you know, I, I just don't know why we wouldn't sort of take any consideration of his wishes with what he's doing with all the good things in that property. So, I'm also going to be a no vote, Mr. Cost.
Mr. Blake, anyone else?
I'm hard, I'm hard pressed, uh, I'm sorry. Do you can go ahead?
Oh, go ahead.
I've already spoken.
Ms. Saul?
Yeah, I'm going to vote for this. I typically don't want to see a lot of billboards. I think it's just too much sometimes. And I really, I understand Cherry Valley Lodge and their take on this, but I'd like to see an old one come down and a new one go up. And if you're coming into the city, maybe it's go to the works. Maybe, who knows what's going to be on that billboard. But yes, it's an invitation to downtown Newark. So, I will vote for this one.
Thank you, Ms. Saul. Mr. Fraser? Anyone else? Take seven votes. All right, please call a roll vote.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutis?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marley?
Yes.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
No.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
No.
Mr. Fennell?
No.
And Mr. Fraser?
Yes.
Seven three by my count. Eighteen dash fifty-two, or seventeen dash fifty-two passes.
I have the, the sad position to be the last one that goes tonight, in Miss Aladi's comments.
Just pass it.
You could just pass.
And you know I'm not going to do that. Ms. Hewitt, I want to apologize for what occurred here. And the, the personal safety in your house and, and the victimization of that, it's shocking and appalling. And I just want to commend Mr. Rath for responding and, and for being there for you. But absolutely, our police force and our dispatchers should be there for you, too. And so, this isn't the first concern that we've heard, but it is probably the most shocking one that we've heard. And I hope that we resolve this issue and that the next time that you're called, we're there. Other than that, I am, will not be in attendance for the next session. I will be traveling abroad to have some, some vacation with my wife.
And where are you going, Mr. Fraser?
I'll be going to Hawaii. And so, it's real tough.
That's rough.
But I, I would appreciate being excused. And all the, all the best wishes for while I'm gone for this chamber. With that, I'll pass.
And we'll certainly miss you.
I'm sure you will.
We'll vote on that when you're gone.
It is nice.
Just a couple of housekeeping things. Our next meeting, and Mr. Fraser won't be attending, will be Monday, June eighteenth. Committees will be at five forty-five. Full council will be at seven o'clock. I appreciate you attending tonight. Thank you very much. And again, ma'am, I think a couple of folks on top of you, thank you for sharing your story. Is there a motion adjourned? Motion. First one by Mr. Cost, second by Mr. Wang, halls and payroom.
Hi.
Saying hi by saying hi.
Hi.
For adjourned.